I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
If we do this in person tonight?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful time that you've allowed us to be in today. God, we ask that you will help us through all of our trials and tribulations as individuals and as well as the city. In my name, the Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Anita, roll call, please.
Counselor Howard.
That name via Zoom, I'm here.
Counselor Locke. He wasn't there. Counselor Locke.
I'm here via Zoom.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A Coramist declare.
Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do have one modification to the agenda. We'd like to add J. One. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, amending resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, Colorado Retirement Association Membership Resolution.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the modification to the agenda to add J. One. Resolution two zero two three dash fourteen, amending resolution two zero two three dash thirteen, Colorado Retirement Association Membership Resolution. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to modify the agenda adding J. One.
Approval of consent agenda minutes for the regular meeting from November second, twenty twenty-three, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from November second, twenty twenty-three, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
I.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
But a citizen comments and special presentation. Citizen comments, we City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. See if anyone wants to say anything? Tightrope tonight, isn't it? Okay, we'll go to scheduled appearances. In order to be included in this portion in the agenda, you have to file the paperwork. Appropriate paperwork informed with City Clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Discussion on potential hotel project.
Thank you, Council. I'm pretty excited to share a project that we've been working on the last several months that will create new economic development for Montavista and is a significant project for a community of our size. We have been, uh, we just about my whole, my whole city staff team has been working with a company called Cobblestone. Cobblestone is a franchise upscale inn and suite hotel, and they are proposing to build a sixty-two room uh, facility here in Montavista. Cobblestone has a history of going into smaller markets and being able to service a higher class product, product for a community that might not be able to attract something like a Hilton or Marriott. There are over two hundred cobblestones across the country, and they are in smaller communities such as Julesburg, Ray, Yuma, Eads, Eaton.
Springfield.
Springfield, Lamar. Uh, so they're primar- primarily um, on the eastern slope right now of Colorado. We have gone forth with um, let me back up. This is going, going to potentially be a thirteen million dollar project. So we are working with investors. Um, Cobblestone franchise likes to work with local people so that the funding stays locally, and then we'll also be working with our local banks, and they'll put together the financial pre- package for the investors. Uh, we have done a site survey of Sky High property because it, you want it, it's just, it's just a big mismatch of property and lines and everything out there. And so um, the site survey has gone before planning and zoning. And uh, planning and zoning asked for a few clarifications, and so that will go back to planning and zoning on November the twenty-seventh. And this is called a planned unit development. P and D's, all these acronyms. November twenty-seventh is, will be the kickoff date because then at a minimum, we have to give public notice once again. The neighbors in this area have already been notified of the first planning and zoning meeting. So they'll hear and will be asked if they want to come to the second meeting. Um, then we have twenty-one days to begin having um, to do another public hearing, um, so public can, can give their thoughts and concerns on this. That puts us really close to Christmas, so this will likely be set after the first of January. The proposed lot we're looking at is the corner of Sherman Avenue and Sky High Trail. Um, that's the area that the carnival has been set up in the past. This has, um, we've talked with the Stampede Committee, we've been working with them on what would be a um, an alternative as far as where the, the carnival will go. And then um, this has just led then to a larger project, which means that we will move and relocate the baseball fields. The baseball fields, we've been working with the school district, and we would move the two fields out to the middle school. That'll give us potentially three, three baseball fields out there. This is going to be a really a cool project, I think, working with the school district. They use the ball fields primarily during the school year. We use them primarily in the summer months. And so um, the Lor Foundation has said that they would pay for a, an official engineering um, plan out there, so we get the right location for the ball fields, the concession stand, parking, so on and so forth. So we have gone ahead and we got an appraisal of the approximate area with, that this would go in. It's going to be a little over two acres. Um, the city would then have the opportunity to sell the property to Cobblestone. Cobblestone then would work with the investors to take over the project. If you all decide to sell that property, that is the end of the city's role in it. Um, because then it's, then it is with the investors and they're, they're, they will be the builders of this property. If you decide to sell the property and we can sell it at the appraised value or above, we do not have to have a public meeting. However, we think that it is in the best interest that you all hold a public meeting at the time if you make that decision. So what I'm asking tonight is if we can move forward with an, developing an incentive package that we can present to the investors. Um, you guys would have to approve it and, and get this project off the ground. Some questions?
Anybody have any questions? Martha Lauren?
Not for me, Lauren.
I'm good.
So we need a nod or a vote saying yes, we can proceed with an incentive package that we'll then bring back to you guys once it's completed.
Make a motion that you start moving forward on putting together an incentive package for later review.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to have the staff, Gigi and her staff to move forward with the yeah.
Incentive.
Incentive packet, sorry, incentive packet for Cobblestone. Any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
I.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to allow for Gigi Dennis and staff to move forward with developing an incentive package for the hotel project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi.
It will move on to public hearings, considering the adoption of boardments, designating areas of activities of state interest as stated in HB ten forty-one and cod five and CRS twenty-four dash six five point one dash two zero one one concerning the export of water from the sixth county geographical area of the San Luis Valley of South Central Colorado and adopting guidelines for administration. I'm willing to conduct this from over here since it is a public hearing over there, but I'll go over there.
Well, and we have our water attorney, Jeff Williamson. He is also on Zoom.
And uh, I believe Jeff Williamson is with us also who is our water attorney.
I am. Good evening.
Jeff and I had some occasion to discuss this today. We've been in communication back and forth for some time. This ordinance under consideration is uh, have been developed by the San Luis Valley Council of Governments, and it's been passed around to the various municipalities and to all the counties. Uh, you've heard about this before. What it concerns is any um, application that would possibly involve water export from the San Luis Valley. Um, everybody knows the uh, things that have happened with three attempts about this already. So this pulls the counties together and the municipalities together to uh, put in force and effect some rules and regulations concerning any possible water export. There are three components to this, and one is the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement between the various entities. There are a total of twenty-three entities here, about thirteen municipalities and um, a little more than that, I guess, than six counties. We have been active in this matter and also the city of Alamosa has municipalities uh, not, and uh, other municipalities have too, that we work with the Del Norte, South Fork, uh, Saguac, Blanca, um, La Jara. And so this is a public hearing which is required by the provisions of uh, CRS twenty-four sixty-five point one dash one oh one, which requires a thirty-day publication prior to hearing, and that the thirty days have run. It has been published for a public hearing tonight, so we will conduct it as a public hearing. Um, if there are persons who want to testify about this, we'll take that testimony. And we will open it at this time, but I did want to make some preliminary comments. Uh, and I think it's probably easiest to, Council bear with me, just to go ahead, the uh, ordinance number nine twenty-four is not that long, and I think by reading it, uh, I think we know where we're going with this. Uh, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montavista, Colorado, designating site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems and major extensions of existing domestic water systems and municipal and industrial water projects as activities of state interest, whereas the areas and activities of State Interest Act, Sections twenty-four dash sixty-five point one dash one oh one to five oh two CRS allows local governments to designate certain areas and activities as matters of state interest. And whereas a lo- once a local government has designated an area or activity as a matter of state interest, it may adopt guidelines and regulations to administer such areas or activities. And whereas any person who would engage in development in a designated area or conduct a designated area must first obtain a permit from the local government. And whereas the surface water and groundwater resources in the San Luis Valley are the life blood of human and natural environment, and the community's continued ability to thrive, and whereas certain activities of state interest that would transfer water from the San Luis Valley could endanger the viability of these water resources, and whereas the city of Montavista intends to designate these activities of state interest and adopt regulations in accordance with the requirements of the act. Now therefore, it is ordained by the City Council of the City of Montavista, Colorado as follows. Findings and determinations at the eleven sixteen twenty-three regular meeting of the City Council, a public hearing was conducted regarding the designation of activities of state interest in accordance with the areas and activities of State Interest Act based upon the testimony, evidence, and documents considered at the public hearing, the City Council of the City of Montavista, Colorado hereby makes the following findings and determinations. The public hearing was duly noticed in accordance with the requirements of Section twenty-four dash sixty-five point one dash four four two A CRS, the City Council of the City of Montavista, Colorado has taken the following into account, all testimony, evidence, and documents taken and admitted at the public hearing, the intensity of current and foreseeable development pressures in the city, the potential for transfer of water from the jurisdiction of the governing body and from the San Luis Valley, and the potential locations of the activities of state interest. The uncontrolled conduct of such activities would threaten the surface water and groundwater resources of the San Luis Valley, and the designation and regulation of such activities will allow for a coordinated approach to protecting these resources. The municipalities and counties in the San Luis Valley will or have entered into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, to establish the San Luis Valley Planning Area to protect surface and groundwater resources to allow a coordinated approach for regulation of these activities of state interest. Joint Planning Area defined, the boundaries of the Joint Planning Area or the geographical boundaries of the counties of Alamosa, Canaas, Castillo, Mineral, Rio Grande, and Saguac designation. The following activities are hereby designated as matters of state interest, site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems and major extension of existing domestic water systems, B. Efficient utilization of municipal and industrial water projects, Section four. Appliability and exclusions, except for activities set forth in Section four B below, this ordinance applies as follows. Number one, major domestic water treatment system shall include any collection, treatment, storage, or distribution system and any of its components for the export of water outside of the joint planning area directly or by exchange with the eventual capacity to serve fifteen or more service connections. The term components includes without limitation all diversion structures, dams, reservoirs, ponds, water bodies, streams, trenches, wells, pipes, conduits, tanks, pumps, buildings, structures, trucks, and other methods of conveyances. Two, municipal and industrial water project means a project and any of its components to export water outside of the joint planning area for eventual use for municipal or industrial purposes directly or by exchange, and term components includes without limitation diversion structures, dams, reservoirs, ponds, water bodies, streams, trenches, wells, pipes, conduits, tanks, pumps, buildings, structures, trucks, and other conveyances. These designated activities of state interest do not include augmentation or replacement water to the Rio Grande Basin for the purpose of replacing injurious depletions caused by the use of water within the San Luis Valley. If such water is provided in accordance with the rules governing the withdrawal of groundwater in Water Division number three, the Rio Grande Compact, Water Court Decrees, or other state administrative or judicial requirements, nor do these designated activities of state interest include export of water from the joint planning area that remains for eventual use within the Rio Grande Basin, permit required, Section five. No person shall conduct a designated activity of state interest until the activity has been reviewed and permitted by the City of Montavista, Colorado in accordance with duly adopted guidelines and regulations in conformance with the IGA. Section six, separability, if any clause, sentence, paragraph, or part of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person of circumstance, shall for any reason be adjudged by a court of competent jurisdiction invalid. Such judgment shall not affect the remaining provisions in this ordinance. It's passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of November twenty twenty-three by the City Council of the City of Montavista. So that is the ordinance. And uh, that is what's being set forth here. The IGA is an agreement uh, to cooperate between the various entities, governmental entities in the San Luis Valley. Um, at this point, uh, is there anyone who wants to testify on this matter? Did the uh, council have any questions in this?
Yeah, I do. Under the exclusions, you left out one of the exclusions that was included in the MOU, couldn't make it to our ordinance. Specifically, a major domestic water treatment system of municipal and industrial water project that will not export directly or as a component of another project, any water whatsoever from the joint planning area shall not be considered an export of water for the purpose of this agreement. That's in the MOU, but it's not in the ordinance.
Okay, we want to uh, include that in the ordinance itself then, and
Yeah.
With that in our lineation, okay?
So at this point, would I make a motion to amend the ordinance to include that exclusion?
Okay.
As listed in the M. You know.
Seconded. Get down to the adoption, would uh, make that part of your motion. Okay. Um, so, as I said, this does have three components to it. The, the last component is the um, rules and regulations. Those are still being developed. Um, we, we had a lot of input into that, the last component. Uh, and uh, to make a long story short, I sent a um, email to uh, the Council of Governments on this on October the twentieth, twenty-three. And without going into all the different things and the long enumeration of what would need to be considered at any hearing on this by the city and what the effect that would be of uh, upon the City Clerk's office, um, I suggested that uh, we will probably turn this back to the Joint Planning Board and designate them as the uh, the, you know, the uh, as, and deputize them if necessary to uh, carry forth with all the necessary uh, findings and uh, the multitude of things that have to be considered here, which are extremely extensive. I have yet to hear back from them on that, but uh, that's where we are with the rules and regulations, and uh, since they are since that's still being negotiated, that's probably uh, as far as I should go in talking about that component. Well, if there are no further questions on this, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then um, remand the inaction of the ordinance, uh, hundred and twenty-four, we said, yes, the City Council for action. Oh, and let me just ask the, Jeff, did you have any, have anything that you wanted to add to this?
No, I, I think you covered it. Uh, thanks, Gene, and uh, I guess I, I would add that I think the, the difference in language between the ordinance and the, the MOU, um, that missing item, that missing exclusion, and I suspect that was um, because the IGA was updated at a later date, and I don't know that, that the ordinance was. Um, but I think that would be a, an acceptable addition.
Thank you. So uh, this is uh, submitted to the council. You may want to make that motion. Thank you.
I make a motion to amend four B and ordinance nine twenty-four to include a major domestic water treatment system for municipal and industrial water project that will not export directly or as a component of another project, any water whatsoever to the joint planning area shall not be considered an export of water for the purpose of this agreement.
Seconded.
It's been moved, seconded. Approved nine twenty-four with amendment.
Actually, I just made the movement through the amendment, then.
Oh, okay, so it's been moved and seconded for the amendment, number nine four, then it's nine twenty-four. And is there any discussion? Mayor, will you also include the intergovernmental agreement in that motion to adopt that also?
Well, we're just amending our nine twenty-four at this point.
At this point, yeah.
Then we'll move on to them.
Anita?
Counselor Howard.
I.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to amend ordinance nine twenty-four as stated by by Counselor Lorenz.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number nine twenty-four as amended and along with the intergovernmental agreement to protect water resources.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Approved ordinance nine two four with amendment and intergovernmental, intergovernmental governmental. Was there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
I.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to approve on first reading ordinance nine twenty-four as amended and the IGA to protect the water resources. Second reading will be held on the December seventh. Council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Liquor license, licenses liquor renewals. Bachelor of ownership of Quincy's to JK LP.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is not a public hearing, so um, we do not need to go into a public hearing for this. Um, while back you had given authority for transfers to be done administratively. Um, I am just bringing this to your attention tonight, um, because this Quincy's is going to remain Quincy's, but the owner of Quincy's has sold it and it's going to be under new ownership, so that's why I'm bringing it before you this evening. Um, so I do need a motion to recess as council and go into the Liquor Authority Board.
So moved. Seconded.
And moved and seconded recess going to uh, Liquor Authority Board is accountable. Uh, liquor authority board is accountable.
So before you tonight is the application from Christopher and Joy V Hill. They are the new owners of Quincy's. They have purchased Quincy's restaurant and they purchased it. And took ownership on November first. Um, they will remain Quincy's Steakhouse. Um, they have been given a temporary liquor license to continue business. Um, they have completed the entire liquor license application for the state of Colorado. And I, they are here this evening, um, to introduce themselves. And I would just like permission for them to go ahead and to continue as Quincy's Steakhouse and Spirits. And, um, like for them to introduce themselves and let them give you any information they'd like this evening. Um, but I would like to recommend approval on this transfer. Again, they have met all the requirements and the P D has not had any complaints or. And does not have any recommendation on their site either.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joy V Hill with my husband Chris. I recently bought Quincy's and I was really hoping to serve all you guys and keep Quincy's going and, um. Just really make the business flourish and then hopefully help you bring it tonight.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me, let me, move some.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of ownership. Of Quincy's to J K Limited.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of the ownership of Quincy's to J K L T E. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the liquor license transfer. To, of Quincy's Restaurants to J K Limited.
Again, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Good luck on that. All right, we'll move to, uh, Resolution two zero two-three dash fourteen.
Good evening, Council. So a few weeks ago, G G and I brought to you a resolution terminating our current retirement plan with Mission Square. And adopting a new provider, Colorado Retirement Association. It's come to our attention that we misunderstood that the current employees would be able to leave funds within Mission Square. Um, we now know that unless an employee terminates. Or retires, their funds must stay with the employer's plan upon transfer. So with this information, we must amend Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. The amended Resolution twenty twenty-three fourteen. Removes the paragraph referring to current employees leaving their funds with Mission Square and adds the last paragraph reading as follows. Whereas all current employees will have to roll over funds from Mission Square to Colorado Retirement Association. And all future contributions made by the city for the employees will be placed. Within the same accounts with Colorado Retirement Association. So I guess we just need a motion to approve the new resolution as amended. That's a review.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen with the amendments to the retirement plan.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution two zero two-three dash one-four. Certain more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, amending Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. For the Colorado Retirement Association membership plan.
Thank you. I might add, just for information, yesterday was our open enrollment meeting and we did have, um. Our new representative from Colorado Retirement Association, he was. Really, really, really good. We really appreciated his input and I think he's gonna be great, so. Um, he's already, uh, approached us with coming back and. After we make our first couple contributions and meeting with employees individually, so. We're kind of excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Ordinances. Ordinance nine two-two, second, final reading of the twenty twenty-four budget.
We are council members. Here's the second reading, if it's all right with you, um, I will read through it. It, but I would like to not read each individual fund amount. Again, um, but if anybody needs a copy of. The ordinance, I do have it in case they want to read through it. Um, I have before you ordinance number nine twenty-two, annual appropriation ordinance, adopting a budget and appropriating sums of money. For the city of Montevista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning January one. Two thousand twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas city manager G G Dennis has submitted a proposed budget to this governing body. And whereas upon public notice, said proposed budget is open for public inspection. And said notice advises that the proposed budget would be taken into consideration for the further meeting. Of the City Council of the City of Montevista, Colorado. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Montevista, Colorado. Section one, the twenty-two thousand twenty-four budget for the city of Montevista submitted. And herein summarized by fund is approved and adopted. Section two, um, lists the estimated revenues for each fund. The total revenue is twelve million nine hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-four. Section three, the following sums are appropriated for each fund. The total expenditures is fourteen million four hundred ten thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. The State Council finds that this ordinance is necessary to the immediate preservation of the public peace, healthy. Health and safety and shall take effect and be enforced from and after thirty days after the final publication of this ordinance. Um, and, um. For just to repeat, there's also a. Listing of the fund balance overview that shows the list, the starting. Fund balance, the net activity of the twenty twenty-four budget and the estimated ending fund balance. To show that, um, we have the funds available. Um. To cover the, um, expenditures. So I would ask that you approve the second reading. If you don't have any question. Or comments?
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-two. Second and final reading of the twenty twenty-four budget. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine two-two, the second and final reading of the twenty twenty-four budget. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Ordinance nine twenty-two passes on second and final reading for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Ordinance nine two-three, second and final reading is on in parcels located at sixty North Broadway. Sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue and sixteen Washington that were not originally zoned when city adopted the zone districts.
There was no changes to the ordinance from the first reading at the last meeting. Um, so I will read the title and then hopefully you guys will move on and begin to smile. An ordinance to City Montevista, City Council to zone parcels located within the city limits that were not originally zoned.
Why don't you read the addresses?
Dang it. The legal descriptions. How about the parcel numbers?
I, I just want.
Just the address.
Just the address.
Without doing the legal descriptions. Let's not do that. Um, the first one will be. Uh, sixty North Broadway, sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue and sixteen Washington.
And they will be zoned what?
These ones will be zoned, so sixty North Broadway will be zoned to commercial highway. Sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue will be zoned to commercial highway. Sixteen Washington will be finalized as commercial business.
And this is for the purpose of what?
So the weekend seller, they, they, they weren't originally zoned, so for the purpose of it, for the good order, like. Originally, when they became off of the railroad and they were deeded to other people. Nobody zoned them. Um, so when the original zoning maps were done, they were incomplete, so this will finalize those portions of the zoning map.
All right, want to make a motion. To approve ordinance nine twenty-three, second and final reading zoning parcels located at sixty North Broadway, sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue. And sixteen Washington that were not originally zoned when the city adopted the zone districts. Current use matches what we're zoning, correct?
Um, current use on two properties currently vacant, they're one, they're under contract to sell and yes, the use will be, the other one. Matches the surrounding zone.
I don't know, should we get a second? Uh, second, okay. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine two-three, second and final reading. The zoning parcels located at sixty North Broadway, sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue. And sixteen Washington that were not originally zoned and the city adopted the zone districts. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-three and second and final reading. To approve the zoning. Of parcels located in sixteen North Broadway, sixteen thirty, sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue and sixteen Washington. That were not originally zoned when city adopted the zone districts.
The M O U for the Crane Festival?
So I'm actually not here as the city clerk, I'm actually here as a Crane Festival member, um. We have put together the M O U for the Crane Festival this year. It's already been signed with the Chamber of Commerce. And tonight we would ask that the city council would approve the M O U for the twenty twenty-four Crane Festival. We have not made any changes that have been in the past with the city of Montevista. And we will still be holding it out at the Sky High complex.
Make a motion to approve the M O U at the Crane Festival.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the M O U for the Crane Festival. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the M O U for the Crane Festival for twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just to put it on the record and it's something that we're gonna be keeping an eye on. Um, the federal government, through the. You know, their government services administration, they're the ones that. Overseal facilities and property and says how much room that they can have. Have. The feds have decided that they need to downsize. The amount of space they will allow any federal employee have. Thus, you know, the. Um, our Forest Service that been moved to Del Norte, they actually moved into smaller spaces. Because of. You know, that's, they can't breathe in too much air, I guess. So Mike Blenden, who has been before council with the little libraries. He used to be the manager out at the Wildlife Refuge. And they've been alerted that those buildings were built in the fifties. And that Congress is looking at tearing them all down. So we're. Mike met with myself and Aaron Minx with Senator Bennett's office. Here recently and we're gonna be keeping an eye on this, cause we may have to really rally our troops and. Make sure that there is some sort of a facility left. Or built that will help, help us with the Crane Festival and what it brings to our community. So. Does F Y I spoken back your head information?
Next.
Yeah. Our tax dollars.
Well, the staff proposals, reports, and actions. Urban? Please, sir.
All right, sweet as usual. Good evening, y'all. Um, right now with Recreation Department, uh, we do have on December seventeenth, the hunter safety class. Set for out at Sky High, um, not sure what the registration is, uh, getting with Tyler on Monday. Uh, to find out what the registration is for that, but he says that it's pretty full, we set it at a max of sixty, uh, for that class. Um, and then, uh, right now we're just taking registration for boys' basketball for next year. Girls' basketball, we're great, I tried to give my referee shirt away to a few parents, but they, uh. They seemed to quiet down after I offered them my. And that's, um, but that's it, that, all that I have for recreation, so. Looking forward to next year's activities. Any questions? Victor wouldn't take my shirt either. Actually, he's not. Nika, kids connection?
Good evening, Council. Um. I'm here. I don't have nearly as much energy, I think, cause you guys are used to, cause I'm trying to. Save what I have left for eleven hours tomorrow, that's all I have left, second, like, greatest thing ever. Um, our current attendance every day after school is at sixty-five students, current enrollment for the year, we're at a hundred and twenty-two. So we see about fifty percent of what we have enrolled, enrolled in the program, um, and it, it's pretty consistent with the same sixty-five. We bounce between sixty-five and close to seventy, depending on the day of the week. Um, still currently short staff, um, there are five of us. So we're really pushing the limits on our staff to child ratio. We currently with five of us can. Um, have seventy-five kids in the building, so we're like. Tiptoeing the line for capacity in each of the rooms as well. Um, but we've not had any luck with hiring, no luck with the application pool. Um, so I honestly told Judy, we're gonna take a break until next year and we'll try to hit it hard at the beginning of the year and see what we can. Fix about the whole situation. Um, we're able to manage what we're doing right now, we are approaching our holiday season, so we don't have a lot of days. That we have to worry about. Um, so. We're just gonna put a pause on. The whole staff thing until the beginning of the year and try to figure out what we can do. Um, to get people to show up to interviews, we're getting the applications, we're just not getting them to show up for the interview, so. A lot of time is wasted waiting on people to not show up. Yeah. Um, we had a little situation with our cleaning crew and so we do not have them cleaning our facility anymore. So right now staff is taking that on on top of all of our children. Um, we'll be able to manage that for a little while and. Like I said at the beginning of the year, a lot of things are gonna change at the beginning of the year and I hope I have more energy to focus on it. Um, next week we are closed for our fall break, um, so we're closed all of next week for kids. Um, Jesse and I will be in the building a little bit. Throughout the week, just to get ready for the week after, um, when kids come back to school. And then we have three weeks and we go into the Christmas break season and. Between the two weeks that kids are out of school, I think Kids Connection has opened a total of four days, but those are full operation days. And then. School picked back up, I think on January sixth, and then you have a really long stretch until spring break, so. Um, oh, our A C units are finally gonna go up on the building. Yeah.
Just in time.
Yeah. Um, Rob crew got them over to the. Um, Rob crew got them over to the the units over to my building today, and Husman Plumbing will be doing all of the outside work tomorrow, and then they'll be in the building working, doing the inside work um, when we're closed next week, so.
The roof got done?
Huh?
The roof?
The roof, yeah, the roof got done, and I believe the electrical got the electrical system on top of the roof got done. Um, the roof itself got patched, and then the platform is already out there. So the next step is Husman, I believe, is going to put the A C units on top of the building on that platform that they have up there and get all of that stuff up there tomorrow, from what I understand. And then next week they'll come inside and hook up the plumbing inside of the facility to the existing heating units that we have. So that's all I got for you. You guys have any questions?
Thank you. Sky.
Evening, council.
Um, so I'll start you off with some numbers. Um, we ended October with thirty-four events. Um, right now we're scheduled November with forty-one events. And um, we have thirty-three events scheduled for December, including multiple Christmas and holiday parties. Um, a few more than we had last year, so we're starting to pick up steam on some of that holiday party stuff. Um, right now we do have our open walking program going uh, Mondays and Wednesdays from seven A M. to ten A M. And five P M. to seven P M. Um, we haven't really had anybody take advantage of that just yet, but we're hoping as it starts to get a little bit colder, they'll start to show up and take advantage of walking indoors where it's a little bit warmer. Our next uh, public event is going to be the Holiday Bazaar, December first and second. Um, they are taking over the whole event center this year. Um, and last I heard, they had ninety-something vendors already registered, so it should be nice and fun. They'll have Santa there as well as the Grinch to take pictures with, depending on your mood, one of each maybe. Um, but that should be really fun. Um, projects that we've been working on, we were finally able to find somebody to finish up the epoxy on the floor in the showers. That was the last space that didn't get done. Um, so they will be in there that first full week of December to get that finished up, so we can start utilizing the showers for different events. Um, Gigi and I have been working on updating the pricing for twenty twenty-four. Um, so we should have that for your review at the next council meeting. Um, that way if you have any questions, we can get that adjusted before January. Uh, my staff has been working really, really hard on getting our Christmas decorations up. Uh, we had a Christmas lightbulb party this week uh, because we had to screw in one thousand seven hundred and fifty light bulbs to get that together to go on the outside of the building, because they sell the light bulbs separately from the wiring. So that was really fun. Um, a huge shout out.
The Grinch, what you're saying.
Oh, no, I miss Christmas. My staff is thinking I'm a little crazy on that, but I love Christmas. Um, a huge shout out to R E C. that is helping us to put the light on the building next week. Um, so they offered to help us, since some of those roof lines are a little higher than my man lived and my my guys can get to. Um, and then last thing I have is we are currently working with um, Alamosa, the Upper Railroad Economic Development and the Montevista Chamber to bring the rural philanthropy days to Sky High next September. Um, so big deal to bring some of these funders into the valley. Um, and so all of all of our entities are getting together to make sure that it can be held here in Montevista and at Sky High. Questions?
Good. So you and Gigi in cahoots on the Christmas lighting or who's going to outdo the other one?
I don't know. She she has a little bit of a head start on me. I just slowly getting my stuff.
People, what's your do you have from screwing in that many lights?
None. It was lots of fun. We played Christmas music. We did a pop lug. We had hot chocolate. I wore reindeer antlers. It was great fun.
Thought you were going to show us some callous.
No, my staff did discover that if I'm ever in a bad mood, all they have to do is sing me a Christmas carol, and I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Planning, Mr. Andrew Lee?
Good evening again. Um, let's see, so we're continuing to finish the land use code update. Planning zoning has a work session scheduled on the December or on the twenty-seventh. Um, we will be reviewing the P U D as well as uh, finishing up some of the definitions and some other things going with the code. We submitted two grants this last week, one to the E P A for hazard mitigation, a million dollars um, to assess and abate uh, the best asbestos and mold in various places around the city, including here City Hall, one seventeen Adams, the theater, and then we can also open it to the public until we get our cap of a million dollars. Um, so we'll be able to do a lot of that. Hopefully, we'll get that back in the next probably six months. The company we worked with has a greater than seventy-five percent success rate in getting the E P A grants, so we're we're pretty hopeful on that one. We also made one to D O T for technical assistance on trail planning. Um, this one basically is to help us get us up to apply for grants. Um, it doesn't have a dollar amount per se to it. Um, there's no match to it. What it does is it brings in other planning entities to help us figure out the best avenues for trails, walkways, biking, pedestrians, to get from our city center to other places in town and then set us up with uh, grant writers and some of best practices to try to get more grants down there. Um, so we applied for that this week. We did receive an award letter, which you guys got an email about from Dola for our Main Street Live. Um, that grant was for seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, which will redo the alleys between Jefferson and Adams and Adams and Washington. Um, it'll uh, work on the infrastructure as well as the surface itself, helping correct the drainage and other issues that are there. Xavier is our mayor for representative. You guys have met him in the past. Uh, he is working diligently with our subcommittees for all of the goals. Um, we are looking for more volunteers to fill out the rest of the goals. We're working on some avenues to specifically ask people who have a vested interest in some of those goals to try to meet them. Um, but tonight he's got one at the Chamber of Commerce. He's had one pretty much one, two nights a week for the last month almost. Um, trying to get those off the road or off the ground, and he's done a good job with it. He's he's doing a good job of getting some coordination, some good artwork. Um, and then we have a steering committee meeting coming up uh, the end of this month as well. We're still getting building requests, even as late as today, I only wanted to get a permit to build a home um, and try to start that year. Um, so we are seeing more housing building requests uh, in the last probably four months than what I seen in the other eighteen months that I've been working here. So it's kind of nice to see the housing market picking up uh, and other than that, I've been really um, involved with the hotel project with the Sky High project and with multiple other things, including the multiple redesign. We did get the twenty-six thousand dollars from the law. They signed that contract this last week um, to do the design with uh, Elektra Johnson, so that'll go out to them and we'll start working on that. Um, me and Durbin have worked pretty extensively trying to figure out what amenities we would like to see the city, and then we'll work with the school district to make sure that our needs fit their needs and everything matches real nice and comes together in a pretty package. Other than that, it's kind of just business as usual. We're doing a good job of getting a lot of our historical documents scanned into the system. We got our map room finally organized. Uh, Megan Franklin, who is mine and Rob's assistant, has been really instrumental in getting that stuff done. We also met with Will Dan, which is, you guys remember, is the water meter uh, consultant group. Um, and we will be having a work session in the near future to go over their findings, the results. Um, it still looks like it cash flows very well. And it should be a a project that we can afford with. So we'll be looking for a work session probably in the next month um, to get that moving forward and then work toward the actual contract so they can begin work this spring, if that's how everything works out and you guys agree. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, D J. City attorney?
Mayor, council? So we had, um, yesterday we had thirty-three cases on the docket, kind of an average time. Um, five traffic that breaks down to uh, one dangerous dog, uh, one drug house, two harassments, um, one dog running at large, uh, one dis- uh, three disorderly conducts, uh, one theft, uh, one assault, one drug paraphernalia, one shoplifting and two vaping. Um, put the vaping there at the end because uh, we met with uh, school superintendent Weedman, high school principal Jose Ortega, Chief Dingfelder, Officer Pino, David Pino, and Judge Zollers on the vaping issue again, and um, kind of worked out a procedure. First two times they catch a kid doing this, uh, the school is going to impose its own sanctions. In other words, detention and loss of privileges. Um, third time, it becomes a summons and complaint. And uh, part of the diversion program that Judge Zollers is going to impose uh, through the restorative justice program, eight hours to be completed by uh, the student uh, and uh, reporting back to the court and this type of thing. So that's where we are on the, you know, we're finding a variety of things that are being vaped, uh, tobacco, C B D and some T H C. Um, so uh, that's that's where we are on working that. Um, we processed the return of one seventeen Adams Street property from the Mathiases to the Montevista, we're in no authority by deed. And then uh, by another deed from the U R A back to the city. In that whole process, we procured a uh, O and E report, uh, owner and commerce report from open title showing no lanes, so that is back in the city now being um, uh, recorded at present time. Um, we've uh, been working, we we finished work on our and on the code definitions, submitted those back to D J there, so we're just uh, waiting on the next step uh, where we're going with that from there. Um, and the planning commission reviewed the P U D for um, Sky High out there, and uh, I think everybody recognized that we needed some uh, additional work on that uh, before approving it uh, at council, so that's a work in progress at present time. Things I've been working on. Also, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks for joining. City manager? We're going to hear about Christmas.
What?
We're going to hear about Christmas lights.
We talked about that last time. Um, there are some dates I want you guys to get on your calendar. Um, but first I want to thank Anita for her um, all her work and what she did with the the budget. We had described a lot of things, so uh, I told D J that we can't apply for any more grants in twenty twenty-four because we don't have any matching money. So if it's not a grant for a hundred percent, we're going to have to um, you know, dance the night away, I guess, figure that one out later. Uh, but that, back to Anita for just a second, um, we are in search of a new finance director and uh, it's a tough market. You know, you heard Anika talking about it. We've got um, we'll have two in Public Works. And um, we've got Kids Connection. So you're going to be hearing a few radio ads. We're going to try reaching out that way and see if we can't. Someone that's not really looking for a job may think, oh, I'm a great finance director and I'd love to go work for the city, so we're going to try that avenue. We did get another grant uh, called Outdoor Recreation Roundtable. This is a nonprofit at the federal level and um, S L V Go applied for it for us, and the ten thousand dollars will be used to help translate some of the um, literature and the information that was people want to see about our businesses and and or tourism that um, was part of goal one of our rural recreation grant. So S L V Go did it, and we were excited to see that we received that funding. I do want to thank the right. That was the foundation that hosted the Campfire Conversations, and they were doing three in the San Luis Valley. They did one in San Luis. Last Thursday was here in Montevista, and thank you, Councilman Segala, for being a part of that. And then tonight in um, Swatch. And so I'm still not unsure what they're going to be doing it with this, but they've been going around the state, so selecting Montevista to be part of that. Okay, your calendar's out. So um, November twenty-ninth, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting at the airport for the uh, fuel farm completion. And so as many of you council members that can attend, it'd be awesome. We'll do the ribbon cutting around eleven thirty, and then we will um, just do a hamburger luncheon. We've we've kind of we're just trying to target the pilots and listen to see what they want. And then Rob and I can show you some of the other improvements that we've been able to make out at the airport with the federal cares funding that we got. December the thirteenth.
What what time is that ribbon cutting?
Eleven thirty. Councilman Howard, eleven thirty.
Thank you.
And then um, December the thirteenth is our holiday luncheon with all the employees. So
November the thirteenth?
December thirteenth, yep. That'll be what time Anita, you need it?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty at Scrumpy Booze.
And we'll, I'll send out a flyer.
But um, they're not usually open for lunch, and so the restaurant will be closed, so we'll kind of have the pri- the privacy of just the city employees and that. You know, kind of like what we did last year when we went out to Dos Rios.
Well, they have more than one waiter.
Yeah. Hopefully, well, more than one waiter. And then um, December fourteenth is the date that D J and I have been looking at for the work session over the over Will Dan and the water meters. So if we can do that, December fourteenth at five thirty. I mean, it's pretty crazy. We only have two meetings left for this year. January's sneaking up fast.
Time flies in here.
That's right, we are.
Uh, the fourteenth again?
Any questions?
Well, ma'am, thank you guys for all you're doing. I like seeing those emails about all the grants and everything that's coming through. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Is that at five thirty?
Five thirty, yes. And then the downtown celebration, uh, the parade of lights and the official turning on the Christmas lights, that'll be December second.
December second.
December second. So come on down for that.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
All right, council committee, city commission and council report reports. Martha?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Warren?
Oh, I know. I was going to ask, I don't know, either Durbin or Stephanie, have we received the flooring for Sky High?
The basketball.
Basketball stuff?
No, not yet.
Hey.
And and we have, and then people that bought the basketball courts have not been there to pick them up yet either, so. We gotta get rid of, get, have those move on, so we got room then for the new ones.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know, other than that, I'm excited about some of the new things happening. The hotel will be a nice addition.
Thank you.
See if we can make that happen. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Lauren. Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Segala?
I don't have anything I know that I can think of.
Nothing? Everyone's talking about. Everyone's talking about you.
If I had a, a, uh, crowd full of, um, I'd be happy.
Okay, well, the only thing I have for you guys is, uh, the Christmas parade is December second. Goes on with the Holiday Bazaar by Sky Park, is that the parade lights?
And the Christmas train.
And what?
The Christmas train.
Yeah, Christmas train, this train's come from Alamosa. What is that?
So this is a new, kind of a new addition, the new owners of the railroad, so they wanted to be a part of it, so.
Wow.
We'll have an engine all lit up, I think.
Coming through Monte?
Grinch on it too.
So. What, what time is the tree lighting? Dale, do you know?
I don't.
I wanna say the tree lighting itself is at five fifteen or five thirty and then the parade follows at six or six fifteen.
I could try, that's pretty close, glad somebody's keeping track of that. You'd think I would. Nah, you're just mayor. Yeah, so. Outside of that.
Outside of that, you guys need to wish the community and our employees a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, we do, yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Enjoy your families and, uh.
Get a turkey coma.
And, uh, be thankful for having your families around, for sure. So, with that, we will adjourn the meeting until December seventh, six PM here. So, Jason? I get this turkey and it was just.